Neither one.
It's not a compliment, Bob.
Okay, alright.
I had to shave yesterday for like the first time in six days. Figured I'd at least try to clean up a little bit.
I'm not doing that either.
Looks like we're live streaming now, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, great. And enjoy our playful banter about haircuts and overgrown beards.
Well, I'm sure the public can can understand and relate to this, so.
We're all in this together.
I think absolutely. That's exactly right.
Well, sure, I tried to tune into the commissioner meeting last night and trying to get the YouTube feed up on my phone and it kept saying this is restricted content. And I was like, what, what does this mean? Then I realized that new parent foibles, I was still in my kid's YouTube account with all the parental controls. Is not suitable for children ages four and five, so. After I switched profiles, it was easy to view the meeting. Trying to figure out what on earth was going on with the the technical connection and it was parental controls. Looks like we're still waiting on David Huffman.
Evening, Rachel.
Hello.
Rachel's always smiling, you know, she's just a model one, model employee.
Hi, Peggy.
How are you?
Doing fine.
Alright, looks like David's got a technical difficulty, so we'll give him another minute or two for the team to get him on here.
Jeff, how's our officer and the the dog doing after the attack last week?
Talon's doing excellent. He's in recovery. He's home. Alec is the handler and he's taking great care of the dog. We're pushing out some updates on social media to kind of capitalize on people's love for animals and that's working well and the dog's doing great.
Good, good.
Thank you for asking.
Alright, it is seven o'clock, but we will should have attorney Huffman here with us in just a moment and take a looks like he has just joined.
Mayor, I have a comment in my chat box that says, Mr. Huffman told us to go ahead and proceed.
Alright, well, I see him in the chat, so I think we're safe to go. His video should come online shortly.
I'm here.
There you go. We don't need to see your face, but we appreciate it.
It's a better world without it.
Alright, well, without further ado, we'll officially gavel in and welcome everyone to tonight's meeting on May 19th, 2020 Burlington City Council. For this meeting, the Burlington City of Burlington is convening via Zoom again. Both video and phone conference available as posted on the city of Burlington's website identifying how the public may join. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, the meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. The meetings will also be livestreamed on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/cobnc. Please note the meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical or connection difficulties, we ask you to contact Public Information Specialist John Vernon. His number is 336-513-5440, and I'll mention that again throughout the meeting if anyone during our our public comment session is having difficulty joining. For tonight's public comments, attendees who wish to address the council will please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if you're joining us by phone, it's star nine. And then you'll be called on when it's your time to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltutis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
And then staff participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative as well. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Finance Director Peggy Reese. You can faintly heard of Peggy back there.
I'm here.
Alright, excellent. Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Present.
Police Chief Jeff Smythe.
I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. For tonight's invocation, we recognize Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
So let's all take a deep breath and if you wish to bow your heads. We are called for a moment to reflect on a world so different from the world as we knew it at this same time last year. Our concerns were so normal, so seemingly simple than what we are facing now. We were able to gather for all of the rituals of our common life and to celebrate the ways we were moving forward. We are humbled today by the threat and our general helplessness in the face of a disease we have never seen in our lifetimes. We are working to recover and to move forward carefully, not able to predict the outcome and without a clear path into our future. We are asking for your help. Give us patience and continue the strength you have already sent us to face what looks like a very new reality. Bless all those in the health professions and in emergency services who are taking such good care of us. Bless all of our city employees who continue to do what ought to be done. Bless this council with wisdom and guidance for the decisions we make here tonight. And bless all of our citizens who are not waiting for things to get back to a new normal, but instead are creating new ways to take care of themselves and each other. Dear Lord, be good to us, for the sea is so wide and our boats are so small. Amen.
At this time, we recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith for the code of ethics.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Yes, I do have one, Beverly, and I would like to recuse myself from the discussion of the outdoor dining.
Yes, if I could, Ms. Hikes called me earlier this week when she saw this was going to be on the agenda and we reviewed the facts of the situation. She does have a direct financial interest in this subject matter, and it would be proper for her to be allowed to recuse herself.
Excellent. Do I hear a motion from council? Councilmember Ward?
Mayor, I move to recuse Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Alright, do I have a second?
So I guess.
Alright, motion from councilmember Ward, seconded by Harold Owen. All those in favor of accusing councilmember Hikes from item two of new business, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, opposed. Motion passes. Councilmember Hikes will be recused when we reach item two of new business on our agenda. Thank you. Alright, next is the adoption of the agenda. The agenda has been set forth before you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make sense.
We adopt the agenda. Okay.
Now, I got councilmember Butler with the motion. Councilmember Ward with a second. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion passes with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item aids to approve a change to the city of Burlington's employee health insurance, third-party administrator and network from Blue Cross and Blue Shield of North Carolina to Aetna for fiscal year July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, and authorize the city manager and director of finance and risk management to sign the contract contingent upon satisfactory completion of legal review and city attorney approval. So I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda.
So move.
And second.
Motion from councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. All those in favor, please say aye and a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward and Owen. Next on our agenda is new business. We have three items of new business tonight. Item one, city council will consider approving a grant-funded youth diversion coordinator position level 19 and approved budget amendment 2020-30 to establish the NC Governor's Crime Commission Youth Deflection and Diversion Program, otherwise known as YDDP Project Ordinance. I'd like to recognize Police Chief Jeff Smythe. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, can I take this?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Butler conversed with me earlier and requested we delay action on this item. There are some questions he wants staff to take a look at and respond to, which obviously we're not ready to do this evening. If it's okay with the city council, we're happy to. We checked our deadlines with the North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission, and there is, we're okay if we want to push this forward to a June meeting. We have not gotten a final letter from the Crime Commission. At the point that we did get the final letter, we have 30 days to respond. So we've got some number greater than 30 days to respond back to the Governor's Crime Commission.
Would the desire be then to table this item until the June 2nd or June 16th meeting?
I would like to make a motion that we table the item if everyone would be in agreement to the to the next meeting, which would be June.
June 2nd, I believe.
June 2nd.
Alright, do I hear a second to that motion?
I second a motion.
Motion presented by councilmember Butler to table this item to June 2nd, seconded by councilmember Ward. Any discussion, comments, or questions on this? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, everyone. We'll revisit this item on June 2nd. Next on our agenda, item two, city council will discuss allowing restaurants more flexibility in establishing outdoor seating areas adjacent or nearby their business during phased reopening from COVID-19. Council Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes has been recused from this item. At this time, we recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am here this evening to present to you a some staff options and ideas at council's request. We have been in a phased stay-at-home order for several months now, and some of the earliest businesses to be closed and have severe impacts from from those closures are restaurants. So today's discussion in responding to some council questions on what we can do to to work with restaurants as our phase two reopening approaches. This presentation represents some of staff's thoughts and ideas and suggestions related to this project. So I am going to share my screen and an agenda. Or rather, I think we've got it going here, so.
We got the screen share up, so folks should be able to see that on their video feeds.
Very good. So I will start with my presentation. We're gonna have a couple different things we'll talk about tonight. First, we'll review the the impact of COVID-19 on the restaurant industry nationwide, at the state level, and then at the local level with some data to sort of set the context somewhat. We'll talk about some tools that communities around the the country in North Carolina have been implementing to assist with adding some capacity for restaurants and getting those folks open sooner. We'll review some of the tools that city staff currently have in the toolbox that we can respond to some flexibility for outdoor dining and then have some items for discussion and consideration with council members. At any time during this presentation, please go ahead and stop me and ask any questions, and myself or another staff member who's on the call will answer you. So without further ado, as is probably obvious to most of you, the impact to restaurants due to COVID has been severe. Obviously, this is a disease that is transferred through close contact, close quarters, and personal contact, and restaurants and bars have very close contact in those quarters. What you're seeing on this slide is some of the statewide impacts. So with 20,000 restaurant businesses last year, it's looking like the numbers say 40% of those could potentially close. There's a 1.6 billion in lost sales just from the month of April for restaurants in North Carolina and almost 300,000 people. I believe that number is now over 300,000 people who are employed by restaurants. And this is just restaurants, not lodging institutions or other event centers, just restaurants. Almost 300,000 people have lost their jobs either temporary or permanently in North Carolina so far. On the national level, it's not much prettier. You're seeing that there are 8 million restaurant employees that have been laid off, or two of three restaurant employees in the country. Some of the significant losses to gross receipts that you're seeing there, and as we know, as a local government, a percentage of each of those sales is sales tax dollars that operate our government and our functions. A stark number here matching the state number, four in 10 restaurants are closed and possibly will remain closed. So a very significant nationwide economic impact, including just in North Carolina. And then finally, at the local level, while our data is not as good, it's more anecdotal. Several Burlington staff members for the city and our Sarah Beth Hardy with the Burlington Downtown Corporation have been in constant contact with our restaurant businesses. Obviously, there's been a significant impact for sales. Many of our restaurants are not set up to be takeout-only successful. And when I say that, I mean, you know, takeout successful being a burrito shop or a pizza shop or a bagel or a coffee shop. A lot of restaurants are based on their their model, their economic model is based on sitting down, ordering a meal, and then having beverages and dessert and other services and taking the time within that restaurant where the bill can get a little bit bigger. So the model has not been supportive of a takeout only for many of our restaurants. So some of these temporary closures that we've seen are very likely going to be permanent here in the local economy. I looked at some of the data that we have for restaurants in Burlington and in Alamance County, and this is pretty interesting. Food service operations are the fifth, it's the number five in the top five jobs in the city of Burlington. There are about 2,500 people working directly for food service businesses in Burlington. We have over 200 restaurants in Burlington. And about $7,400 annually is spent by every household in Burlington on restaurant goods or food service goods in a given year. So you can imagine the impact to that annual spending that's happening amongst our residents and the, you know, 2,500 folks who may be impacted in jobs in Burlington is a significant number. So all of that is to say, there's clearly an issue with restaurants, and restaurants are a big part of our Burlington and Alamance community and economy. So what can we do to further support them and what will phase two reopening look like? Well, we don't yet have the guidance from the governor's office. Some things were released late today that we have yet to confirm. But we're not even sure 100% what phase two is going to look like as far as what capacities will be allowed inside restaurants and overall, and then what was going to happen with gathering. So I pointed some arrows at the capacity that we're expecting to see some changes to and what could be allowed, and then also if there will be guidance on whether or not folks will be able to gather in groups more than 10. And then finally, we're still awaiting guidance on what exactly restaurants are going to need to do within those businesses. What type of PPE will be required of them? What type of sanitization guidelines will be provided? And what type of inspections, et cetera? What does that regime and cleaning regime look like for our restaurants? What's that guidance? So there are still a couple of gaps we're looking to fill with this discussion, and we're waiting on that guidance from the state as they roll out those phase two details. So I mentioned that there are other cities that have been getting involved and getting creative with what some options are. These are just a few of the options that are a few of the cities in North Carolina that have been looking at creative dining options. If you open up a Google browser and do a Google for creative COVID outdoor dining, you're going to see that these options are happening countrywide throughout the United States and even throughout the world. So Hendersonville has been, they just passed at their meeting last night, their city council meeting, they will be doing a street closure in their downtown for two days over March, or I'm sorry, May 30th and 31st. They have also included guidance to their planning department to loosen restrictions in private parking lots so that restaurants can create sort of ad hoc outdoor dining areas or temporary dining areas and parking areas. The town of Brevard has opened up their sidewalks for dining areas and for ABC permits. The city of Burlington, we already allow sidewalks to be used through a permit process that I'll get to in a little. The city of Greenville, South Carolina is planning to do street closures in their downtown, and that's a pretty good-sized city. Wilmington, North Carolina is discussing some street closures in their downtown area. And then New Bern, just today via Facebook, their downtown mentioned that they're doing partial street closures that will start in the evenings and last until the next morning. And they are providing a drive aisle for emergency vehicles on that street closure. So a couple of different options are being explored throughout the city or throughout the state, rather. And then Conrad Almeida, one of our planners, read from the Planning List serve in North Carolina today that Elizabeth City, Anger, and the town of Hurtford are also having these discussions with their councils either this week or next week. So this is a topic that is going around everywhere throughout the state, and a lot of folks are looking to do different creative things with their restaurant businesses. So what does what does the city of Burlington have in the toolbox and what can we use to respond quickly and be flexible for some restaurants and for some outdoor dining? Well, thankfully, we have three really good tools that are existing that with a couple of small tweaks can be used to accommodate some more flexibility with outdoor dining. The first of those is an outdoor dining permit. That covers all dining situations outdoors that would be on a public right-of-way or a sidewalk or other public space that is not a street. A temporary use permit is exists and covers all outdoor dining that would happen on private property. So in a strip center that does not have a designated outdoor dining area, if they wanted to expand a small dining area, we could use the temporary use permit that is on file that that we have to accommodate those requests. That temporary use permit could also be used to accommodate food trucks, and that's what we use when food trucks, pardon, and itinerant merchants are working throughout the city. And then finally, a tool that we use frequently downtown for downtown events is our special event permit, and that permits street closures. That is the only tool that we have in the toolbox right now that allows for direct street closures. That that one permit does require council approval. The other permits are staff approvals. So in given some of the context and background information and the tools that we have in the box, city planning and community development staff, our special events, B-Town event staff, recreation and parks, you know, development services, our Burlington Police Department and Fire Department all got together on multiple calls to discuss these options and tools. And we've come up with the following recommendations for council if we are to consider using some expanded tools or allowing more flexibility for downtown dining. The first would be to use the existing tools that we have with a couple of tweaks. I don't know that we need to recreate the wheel and create a new application form. We have some good application forms that with just a couple of small adjustments will work great for this program. So a couple of the things that we did in November 2019 with our new UDO and some other changes, we were ready for some of these flexibility changes. Second, another staff recommendation would be to consider special events permits for temporary street closures. So if we were to consider as a city allowing some form of downtown dining without a lot of space in some of those storefronts or some of those sidewalk areas, that is a suggestion that could accommodate larger outdoor dining spaces for downtown restaurants. And then finally, some general considerations for any of these expanded temporary outdoor dining situations would be the following. First of all, to ensure that they are temporary, so considering a date certain that the expanded outdoor temporary dining would end, whether that would be with a further order of the governor to allow full operation and full capacity inside restaurants. Number two, that anybody who would be providing expanded outdoor temporary dining would provide a certificate of insurance to the city of Burlington. We would want any outdoor dining area to have some form of physical barrier to protect the occupants inside and to demarcate the exact space of the dining area. Of course, we would want to indemnify the city and make sure that we were held harmless in providing this option to private businesses to take advantage of. And then finally, we want to be sure that in a lease situation or other situation, that all property owners in a strip center or in a group parking lot or whatever it might be, that there is property owner approval to what a tenant is seeking to do in a parking lot or on private property. So that summarizes what we have looked at as a staff in our internal documents and some other ideas that have been explored within North Carolina and without. At this time, we would certainly offer any questions and provide some discussion with council members.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions or comments from council?
I have a question, Mayor. In connection, you know, Peter mentioned it would be temporary. Would it be tied to orders of the governor? That sort of thing. How would we? I guess how would we go about defining the the temporary? Is it or how it would be triggered, you know, when it would end? Has any thought been given to that?
So I can, as I mentioned previously, we talked about tying it to a governor's order that would allow a certain capacity to be allowed back into restaurants. So the the intent of doing a temporary expansion would be to allow restaurants to be more whole and to get back open quicker, rehire their employees, and get that economic activity started. So I I think that our intent would be to try to limit that temporary outdoor dining at a certain time that they would be allowed to have those seats back in the space and that that would be a safe operation. Really, it would be the purview of council if that time would need to be more certain or defined in a different way.
Yeah, thank you.
Peter, my question on on closing streets. I I think let's just talk about downtown for a minute. Obviously, with city-owned property, which may be not adjacent to certain restaurants, but the depot area itself, the brickyard area, the front of that, the side of it for that matter, also in the back is fairly spacious. I'm not sure if that would work in any of the business plans of these restaurants or not, but certainly that would create a an opportunity for some seating to be established, and it would not established and it would not impact other businesses in the community. My only issue over the years with closing streets is the impact it's going to have on other businesses along that street. And I'm not sure if he ever had a policy that specifically said everybody need to, needed to agree to it or not, which may not have ever occurred. But my point is, I think we need to be careful with that. If you ever talk about just closing a street now, it was interesting, you saw that one area where a part of the street was closed. But evidently there was traffic allowed along one area on that street. I, that, that bothers me a little. I think, you know, we keep talking about in terms of capacity of downtown. You know, are the other areas that may come into play here besides the downtown area?
There are a couple of areas of the city. I'm thinking specifically of Trolinger Street and East Davis where there are situations where there is not a lot of other space where you would have that dining, that's sort of storefront dining situation. But that's about it. There aren't a lot of comparable situations to downtown that I can think of offhand that have that very specific situation where there isn't an open space right adjacent to several different restaurants. Of course, aside from the depot, as you mentioned.
Other questions or comments?
I have, I have one, one other observation. And of course, Harold and I have been around a long time. And I'm talking about when you start closing streets, you know, historically, I've had questions raised, you know, about the safety of it. You know, we got to make sure our folks in charge of that, if that is considered, that, you know, we got to consider, you know, the safety aspect of this along with everything else. I mean, I can see quite frankly, you know, readily using maybe the sidewalk area. But when it gets out to closing streets, I'd want to take a hard look at that. Because, you know, downtown, we got, you know, multi-story buildings and, you know, fire equipment. Then any other equipment needs to be get, you know, get through there for safety. So I just want to throw that into the hoppers and we, you know, when we, if we get down to it, like I said, sidewalk for one thing, but streets are another. Harold, you want to follow up on that? You know, you've been around about as long as I have, so.
Well, especially in terms of of seating on a public street, I mean, you've got kids along with parents. Kids can, can dart away. I think downtown, I keep going back, there's a, there's a substantial amount of public owned space, not on streets downtown. You take the space, like I mentioned earlier, around the depot area itself. There's a substantial amount of open space there that can be utilized. Now, obviously you have to do social distancing, so, you know, tables would be spread out and it would probably take some time in terms of the servers from the various restaurants to prepare, get food and, and get it there. And then the other side of that is, I read the question would come into a policy of who could qualify? I mean, you'd have, I think we'd have to have some kind of vision about. You know, it would be a certain area in terms of number of tables. You know, what would be the restriction of the policy based on the various restaurants competing for customers? Or how would that work in a group area? But it may really no different than a mall in terms of a food, of a food area in a mall where you have a bunch of tables there and people can go to whatever restaurant they like and get their food and go sit there. But I, I just, I'm concerned that not only is safety Bob, but also what we've heard over the years is, is once you start restricting access from other businesses along our street, I think that becomes somewhat of an issue and I believe can create not only problems for the businesses, but also as you indicated, some safety issues also. And obviously downtown is our primary fire zone in terms of reference to safety as it is. That's correct. The other question that brought up that asked Peter, for example, let's say the, and of course that may change, but the, there beside the brewery there could not not occur in reference to the parking lot, the LabCorp owns behind it. Could that, could not, that be a potential agreement between ownership of that, of that restaurant and in LabCorp, especially for dinner servings, we think, and weekends?
If that was an option to be pursued, there would need to be an agreement between those two property owners and they could use our temporary dining permit to do that. So that, that would be an option that would leave the decision between private property owners to make that happen.
You know, the, here's the, the concern I have is we've got to be real cognizant of where we're at and Peter did a wonderful job talking about the revenue aspect of it. But there's peoples, you know, there's restaurant owners, there's employees that have livelihoods at stake. And some are hanging on by a thread. Just, just quite honestly, I've talked to several restaurant owners, numerous restaurant owners and workers in the last week or 10 days. Even when we go to phase two, whether it's a 25 or 50% capacity to reopen, that does not economically facilitate a business plan for some of these restaurants to reopen then. They can't function with that lower capacity and cover overhead and get their employees back and, and do all the things that they need to do to function. You know, the next item on our agenda is talking about us going and asking Congress for some money to help us out with our lost revenue. We need to be sure we're paying it forward and that we're doing the right, right things for small businesses and restaurant owners. So, and we need to think citywide, you know, we're talking about downtown, a lot of it's downtown, but there are a lot more restaurants citywide that are, that are going to be struggling with this in some capacity. I mean, you can take church streets, which will go from one western edge of our city to the eastern edge of our city. And just count the restaurants along there. Some have big parking, some have small parking. What we need to do is try to facilitate them to whatever level we can and and certainly make it simple. That, the burdens of, of opening under social distancing and running businesses, I can personally attest to it. The burdens of operating under social distancing and you know, being stewards of what the CDC suggests, taking care of your employees, taking care of your patrons. It is, it's burdensome in and of itself. So I think from city staff standpoint, certainly public safety is first and foremost. That's, that's our primary responsibility. But if we get everybody together, police, fire, we talk about it, we work through it. I think the, the other businesses, if we're talking about a smaller district like downtown, might would welcome the flow of people. Considering the fact that they've had none at this point. But, but we're going to have to do something quicker than later. I mean, this is not an action item I see right now. But if this thing opens up Friday, just pick a date, if it's Friday, then it's going to be a hot potato. We're going to have to get something moving on it pretty quick. From a, from a staff standpoint, have we had conversations with, with restaurant owners? Is this something that somebody brought it to our attention and, and we're bringing it forward or where are we at with that?
So city staff has had conversations with both, you know, sort of suburban strip mall, private lot ones. We've tried to discuss with representatives of each potential permitting request, what they would need and how, what considerations are maybe different for something on South Church Street versus something downtown versus something on North Church Street. So what we've heard from some, some feedback we've heard from our downtown businesses was they wanted to be able to see their patrons as they were serving them in a dining area. That there were concerns about some liability for having to serve too far away from a restaurant. There are ALE permitting concerns and and the ABC Commission that are out there that would be addressed on a case by case basis, based on an individual restaurant's ABC permit that need to be thought about. But in the, in some of the non-downtown areas, what we were hearing was the desire for flexibility to be able to use what in many cases is a large underutilized parking lot for a lot of these businesses. And if we have a reduced seating capacity by law in a restaurant, then that's half the parking that they're not going to need in their parking lot either. So there, there certainly is flexibility that we can find. Now, of course, you know that not every strip center has the largest parking lot. So there are going to be physical challenges that some restaurants are going to face that others will, will not. And so we're, we recognize that, but you know, that's also a function of a private business choosing a private space for a lease that, that really we're not a party to. So we've, I think we've looked as, at a staff at each different possible scenario that a business could ask us for outdoor dining flexibility and tried to run those scenarios through the public safety lens, through the, you know, the, how would we review this? What aren't we thinking about, et cetera?
So would it be feasible to treat it in two pieces where we could maybe, maybe if 80% of our restaurants or 90%, whatever that number is, has private parking on private property, that they're leasing in a strip center or something, couldn't we go ahead and get those just knocked out? Try to come up with the plan for them to operate and at least get that piece done so that we've got something sooner rather than later. And then to Harold and Bob's point, the street closure deal is uniquely different. Lots of pieces that we need to think through, but I do believe we need to, we need to get on that and try to, try to, if we can manufacture a solution, then I would be all for it. I really wouldn't, wouldn't care what it is, if it's a solution that, that everybody's agreeing with, I'd certainly be on board.
And I think that I agree with Jim there. I think, for example, you strip centers, a lot of those strip centers will not be opened, only businesses that open at night are going to be restaurants. Not all, but, but a number of them. We certainly, they could still have a, an area of parking and then working with police and inspections or whoever in terms of what they could block off for seating. I think if, if we consider anything with, with the concept of closing a public street, I believe we got to be date and time specific there. Where it is going to be, the public will understand if we, if we decide to go that route, but also not to conflict with other businesses that may be impacted by closing that particular area for a restaurant, for example. I must say, we can't do that, but I believe we got to be specific, whether it's weekend activity, Friday, Saturday night, Sunday lunch or Sunday brunch, something of that nature. I think a lot of those considerations could be there, but, but also I'd like to ask Mr. Hoffman and obviously Bob's experience here. I think there's certainly, we need to have some legal interpretations on which decisions we make here in terms of where we have the right and where we face the least amount of of potential challenges or hopefully we're on solid ground in making those decisions.
Prior to David responding, Harold, let me just say this. Let me go back to what Jim said. I, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of maybe us putting something together and going forward with respect to strip malls. But I'm, I'm going to guess, I'm going to let David weigh in. I think with respect to strip malls, that's going to be governed by mostly by private relationships. I'm not so sure we have that much of control. I guess we can give permits and say you can have tables outside, but I'm not so sure. I think, I think the owners of the malls and individual leases, I don't, I don't think we should get entangled quite rightly, if that's the right word, in that relationship. I think it's going to be largely up to them to work that out. We can bless it, we can issue permits. But there are certain, I don't know, certain legal issues there that would present themselves in the strip malls that I don't think that, that we'd have any control over it. I think a owner of a mall could say, no, I don't want to do this, you know, or yes, I can. But in any event, let me stop there and David, if you will, if you pick it up from there.
Yeah, let me just say, counsel, that in fact, at the staff level with the meetings that we have had over the last couple of days has in fact focused just on, on what you're talking about here and the temporary use permits. Those are the type of things that would be submitted to a city staff for approval, a schematic of where you're going to propose to block off space in a parking lot. And from that standpoint, first, let me just say that you're going to have to ask the question, who are you going to be dealing with? Are you going to be dealing with the owner of the property? Are you going to be dealing with the tenant? Submit to you're going to be dealing with both of them because they have a contractual relationship and you want to make sure that one, that you got yourself covered or the taxpayers covered as far as what we're approving. We want to make sure that we have safety issues there as far as any sort of barriers to the public. What you're basically doing is approving the blocking off of spaces or even alleyways in the parking lot where people have typically been driving. So you want to make sure that, one, it's from a police and a fire standpoint, that it makes sense and it's safe. From this end of the hall, I want to make sure that the city is not opening itself up to any unnecessarily liability. And so we'd want to make, have some sort of, make sure there's insurance in place that covers not only the owner of the property, but the tenant as well and the taxpayers, the city. We don't, we want to make sure that whatever we approve is, is something that makes sense. But we also have safety at the forefront there.
Other council comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond briefly to some of Mr. Ward and other concerns. I do think as David mentioned, that we are very much poised and ready to move forward with temporary use permits given property owner and tenant agreement, as you all just mentioned. That we, we're pretty ready to move there. Obviously downtown and street closures are a more complex issue. And as such, our process runs those through city council with lots of review amongst other agencies. So we will hopefully have good ample time to answer some of the very specific and interesting questions around downtown. But I feel that staff is very well poised to move forward with any council direction on outside of downtown temporary dining.
Okay, let me, let me add one remark if I could. I, I would kind of like to see whatever we do, you know, to be sort of tailored to the state, you know, posture on this, like a government, you know, governor's executive orders and that sort of thing. I don't know exactly how we can arrive at that. I mean, we could do a time certain or we could just say that, you know, we could take this action and it would be, it would be tied to any future orders issued by the governor of the state of North Carolina. As long as, you know, this program would be in effect, but to go back to the words you used earlier, it would be temporary. I don't exactly how we get there. I'm in favor of moving forward with it. I think it's a good idea. But I really do believe we need to, you know, sort of work on that timeframe, which is, you know, and nail that down a little bit. Does any of you have any suggestions? Do we just tie it to the governor's orders or time certain? I'd like to hear others' thoughts on that, too.
I'm good with the governor's orders. I think that's, that's something we all can understand. And I agree with what Jim said. I saw the other day where in terms of capacity of restaurants in reference to being profitable, the, the terms of numbers of tables, they need to have full over a period of time to make the restaurant success. So in the private situation we're talking about, if indeed the owner of the property and the restaurant owner can come to a conclusion or agreement. Now legally, I don't know what needs to be submitted to the city in terms of its temporary permitting that we'd have to have, but certainly that would go through, through staff. I think we can, you could talk some more about some of the public areas. I realize people want to be directly beside. I realize people want to be directly beside their restaurant. But, you know, how much of the of a street would, would an entire street have to be closed? And frankly, closing only a part of a street is, is really dangerous. I mean, you know, either you enter you out on that, I believe. But I think we, some of these things could be discussed. It may have to be by, by situation to figure out what time that the, the restaurateur would be interested in, in utilizing this tool. And it might just be on specific times that we can, we can work something out. But from a public side, that could come later, but from a private side, I agree with Bob and Jim. I'd like to just go forward if we can and then let people start doing that if possible.
I mean, really, the only thing that you're going to run into with a, with a private side is going to be those that would erect tents. You know, there's going to be, there's going to be some inspection pieces to that and, and various things. But I, you know, I think there's going to be very few property owners that aren't going to be very willing to help tenants to, to, to keep the, the whole wheel turning. But, and that's going to solve the greatest majority of the immediate need. If we can get that in place and, and make it simple, you know, we all, we all, we, in, in, in the world of government, we tend to complicate things a touch and David's probably the worst, David. So, but let's, I, I, I'm telling you, please harden stress to staff that we need to be compassionate and we need to work with these folks because they, they've been through hell. And, and we need to do everything we can to, to help take, take some of that burden off of them. The stress of your health is one thing, but when you couple that with the stress of the economic burdens that small business owners are in county, that's health with bookends. And I think that gets into all sorts of things. So I, I would just implore that we, we be as compassionate and understanding as we can.
And I realize staff is, I realize staff is busy, but I, I would also ask them to consider the, the depot area in terms of the brickyard there, in terms of what type of possible scenarios that could be utilized too. That's a, that's a really, that's an underused space, for better term. And then to, to, to really look at that and then certainly if indeed restaurants are open this weekend or the first of next week, maybe what we're proposing, I think here is the, most of the restaurants, like Jim said, is going to be, we'd, we'd certainly give an opportunity to work with the private owners to get into parking lot areas. I mean, all the way from all the way east to west, north to south for that matter.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on Mr. Butler, Mr. Owens' comments, just, just generally, and we, we hear that message received that we'll make sure direct staff to, to show the utmost compassion and move these as quickly as possible, trying to help folks preserve their economic opportunities. Let me ask one philosophical question, just I think, I think I've heard the answer, but in terms of, Mr. Owen spoke specifically about using the, the Brick Plaza area around the depot. Sounds like he is certainly okay with that philosophically, if we can get through the legal hurdles that we may have. Council members also okay the utilization of municipal parking lots. That may help some of our restaurants as well, municipally owned parking lots that are near the downtown. Obviously, we're nowhere near full capacity on parking downtown, so we certainly can spare the spaces. But is general consensus philosophically that you're okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I think the, the question there is accountability, which we've talked a lot about, which is who is responsible for cleanliness and cleaning up and service there. Obviously, I'm sure our downtown merchants would prefer, as mentioned, to be as close to their storefronts as possible from the ability to ease operations. So if, if we do restrict that option for them and instead offer the brickyard at the depot or the parking lots, I'd ask that we look at how we step in to, to make that a reasonable option, recognizing that if it's out of sight of their facilities, it can be really hard for them to be fully accountable for that.
Okay, thank you for the feedback.
Other council comments, questions?
Mayor, let me ask you, you referenced to stepping in. What, you've got any specific recommendations there? Are we talking about trash removal? Are we talking about monitoring? What, what, what are you referring to there?
That's where I think some level of us doing some trash removal or some logistics with whatever the setup is. If we're offering that as a shared facility of some kind, then I think it's important to recognize that would be less than ideal for many of the merchants. And, and we may have to figure out some creative ways to, to fill in the gaps there.
I have no problem with the, of course, I'm speaking here just for me, but I have no problem with potentially in terms of trash removal. I, I think we've got to be, we really have to look at that in terms of the cleanliness of the facility, the tables and so forth. But there has to be some kind of agreement between the vendor, I believe, or if we open that area up, do we even dictate, you know, what vendors can use it? Because quite frankly, David, you need to help me here. Unless there's some type of specifics we set forth, then a food truck could come out there and set up behind the depot, could they not? With a permit?
With a permit, maybe with a permit, but we, that of course, we have a process already in place for food trucks. So, and that's been discussed. Peter could clue you in on that, that we've already discussed that in the past week too, also.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, it, it may take some effort on the, on the public side in terms of what our specific responsibility should be. But I, I do believe in terms of maybe sanitation or trash pickup, then that's, that's something that I'd be open for discussion with.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Peter, anything else you want to add in?
Nothing further to add. Thank you very much for the discussion and conversation. Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate you and your, your team's work on this, especially I know you've been very much in touch with our local business community, not just on this issue, but throughout this entire crisis. And I know that means a lot to our small business owners who are working diligently, day in and day out, and don't necessarily have time to navigate the bureaucracy of the city. So we appreciate you doing exactly what we hired you to do, which was make things easy and accessible for our business community.
Well, let me say very quickly, this is an iceberg situation. You're just seeing the tip. All the really smart people are underwater who did all the hard work. I'm just talking. So David, our planning and inspections and community development staff, they're, they're the folks that are going to process all these things and work really hard to get this done. So thank them.
Very good. All right. With that, we will move on to item three of our new business. We'll welcome back Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes onto the video feed. Item three, city council will discuss adopting a resolution for a request to members of Congress with aid to offset the reduction in local revenues. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Harden Watkins, and a special guest this evening, North Carolina League of Municipalities Executive Director, Paul Meyer. Welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We're thrilled to have Paul Meyer with us this evening. Paul's Executive Director of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And we've asked Paul to join us to share a few words about some of the efforts that are going on on the federal level, provide maybe a little history and then give us some guidance about suggestions and ideas moving forward. So Paul, welcome to Burlington. We're glad you joined us tonight.
Thank you all. Appreciate you having me. My, my, my wife is from, well, she lived in Burlington for many years, so I traveled those roads many, many times. And it's good to be in front of you all and in front of all the folks that are paying attention to what's going on in Burlington. And council members, mayor, thank you all for having me. It's good to see you all. Couple of things. First of all, I, I haven't done one of these at night, so I, I look like this shadow. I apologize for that, but I'm trying my best. I'm not glowing like Huffman, but otherwise I'm doing just fine. Everything's going good. A few things for the folks that are listening and paying attention. The North Carolina League of Municipalities is an organization that works for 550 cities in North Carolina. And that's the city of Charlotte, all the way down to Love Valley. So 850,000 people, all the way down to 50 residents. We capture every dimension of the state. We touch on every type of city that there is. I think it's important for everybody to know that the majority of our cities are very, very small. And as Burlington, you know, y'all are one of the larger cities in our state. It's, it's just one of those things that you maybe don't think about every day, but that's kind of how it goes. With what's happened with COVID-19, we're seeing statewide, we're seeing tremendous downturns in sales tax collections, significant downturns in the occupancy tax collections. And we anticipate significant downturns in property tax collections on the back end of this economic crisis that's, that cities did not create. This was created by a virus. I mean, you know, people can blame cities for all kinds of things. You can't blame us for this. This is not something that we did. I would say this, I'll give you a couple of numbers. We're looking at $100 million loss in sales tax revenue in the last quarter of this year, last quarter of this fiscal year statewide. We're looking at roughly $40 million in occupancy tax collections that are down just because people are not traveling to hotels. I got to put my glasses on so I can see Jim Butler. There we go. Okay. $40 million down on the occupancy tax. And then the property tax side, it's undetermined. We won't actually see all of this until probably a year or two out. In 2008 to 2010, the local governments were the, we extended the recession because there was not enough state and federal help to backfill the lost revenues of those jurisdictions. And we ended up extending, you know, extending the recession. Obviously, the league is working very hard with our state and federal partners to provide relief directly to cities. The, the federal government said that there would be a locally led, locally led and federally supported response to COVID-19. Locally led means the city council, the mayor, y'all pushing your local restrictions. The conversation you just had about restaurants, you know? How do we open a restaurant but still do it in a way that's safe for, for folks? That's locally led. Federally supported means that there's, there's money coming from the federal government to backfill and pay for your response activities as well as the revenues that you will be losing through the pandemic. Thus far, the state of North Carolina has received upwards of $4.5 billion from the state, excuse me, from the federal government, CARES Act dollars. Those, those dollars are restricted pretty significantly and that state and local governments cannot use them for revenue replacement. It can only be used for direct costs that are reimbursable under, under certain, certain guidelines. A problem that we have in cities is that none of those revenues have been appropriated to city governments. Thus far, the General Assembly appropriated 300, excuse me, the General Assembly dedicated 300 million of the 1.6 billion for local government, appropriated 150 million to county governments with the option that they share it with cities. So for Burlington, you are sitting in the hands of Alamance County as to whether they appropriate any of that money to you all for the steps that your city has taken to respond to COVID-19. They don't have to provide any money to you. They can keep it all for themselves. And that's a very, very serious shortfall. It's a bad decision by our General Assembly and our governor, excuse me, our General Assembly to have done that in that that money was to have been shared with cities through the federal appropriation process. But when you leave it in the hands of one government, it may not flow to y'all. It's a real challenge for you in that the only city in our state that has received direct appropriation is the city of Charlotte. So if you're looking, if you're asking me, you know, what the future holds on this topic, I would say that y'all need to be pushing Senator Tillis and Senator Burr to be looking for direct appropriation to cities straight out of Washington through the US Treasury. There are efforts that the National Association of Counties and the National League of Cities have made to, to push for this. The, the effort there is for equal amounts of money to go to cities and counties so that everybody receives something to replace lost revenues. Because everybody has them, whether you're a city or a county, everybody has lost revenues, whether it be sales tax, property tax, or, you know, other types of, other types of taxes. Statewide, we're looking at for cities, $100 million. We're estimating $100 million in lost revenue in the fourth quarter of 2019, 2020 fiscal year on utilities and reduced collections for utilities. I've already mentioned $100 million in sales taxes statewide, upwards of 50 million on occupancy taxes and an undetermined amount on property taxes. So I guess the real question facing you all is, as a city council, how are you going to backfill that locally? Will it be through cuts or will it be through, will it be through increases in your rates or fees? You know, I, I can't answer that for you. I can just tell you that we're, we're advocating mightily that the cities get some sort of direct appropriation. Again, this was supposed to be a locally led and federally supported initiative. And yet the federal money has not gotten to you all in any guaranteed format. And at the league, we're concerned about the fact that you guys have not received any direct money and are working in partnership with our national partners to make that happen and talking with our state reps, state senators and our governor about the fact that you all are in a significant amount of hurt. The teeniest cities in our state, the ones that have utilities for industries that disappeared many, many decades ago, they were already teetering on economically viable, you know, the questionable economic viability did not recover from the 2008, 2010 downturn and now this. So again, the cities did not create this through mismanagement. They did not create this through, you know, things that people did not like. This was just something that happened and the question is, how do we get you all in a position so that you can live to fight another day and provide the services that your citizens need to not only keep their families healthy and happy, but also to, to achieve economic success and keep your city moving forward. As you all know, the cities are the economic engines of the state and there's no reason that the cities would not be treated equally to our county brethren. And Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Just want to give you all kind of a big picture of what we're, what we're dealing with, what we're working on. Wide open, wherever, whatever you want to ask.
Thank you for joining us. Any questions from council members?
Well, for, for Paul and Harden both, you know, take, take Burlington, for instance, where we budgeted roughly $29 million in sales tax dollars. Just, just talk about sales tax dollars. There's, there's, to Paul's point, there's lots of pools of money that are drifting away, but that, that one's the, the, the sort of the big unknown with, with no, we've got no legal remedy to procure that. So, you know, we're roughly $2.5 million a month. So for the 60-day period of time, that this is going to be a significant impact. What, what are we estimating our loss of that $2.5 million for that 60-day period of time? $5 million for 60 days. What are we estimating there, Harden or Paul? What would you think?
I can't answer for your city. Harden will have a better sense for what Burlington is actually experiencing.
Yeah, Mr. Butler, I think, and we're, it's, it's a, it's a really, really difficult situation that we find ourselves in, as you know, and you've expressed that. Folks are not allowed, I mean, sales taxes depended on consumerism. And if consumers are not allowed to shop, not allowed to buy goods, not allowed to pay for service, not, certain services are not allowed, then those dollars don't move forward. There's no tax collected. One of the challenges for us is there's a three to four month lag on the collections versus the reporting to us. So we're really, if you think about when this fully began, if you want to say it was the first week of March, then that means we're really not going to know the full impact of this until three months after March, which also happens to coincide with the end of our fiscal year. So the dollars that we'll receive for the rest of this fiscal year, dollars, dollars that were collected three months prior. So the picture's a little hard. It's hard to get your arms around that, Mr. Butler, and give you the, The picture is a little hard. It's hard to get your arms around that, Mr. Butler, and give you the, the definitive answer. I think our best estimate, we worked really, really hard on this, trying to look to next year's. Uh, the budget for next fiscal year, but we fully expect, uh, Finance Director Peggy Reese and her staff have worked really hard. To try to analyze this. We've talked to our, uh, colleagues across the state. We've gotten advice, uh, like I said, from the league, we've gotten advice from, from others in the state. Wells Fargo has even provided some advice to us. We're projecting about a million and a half dollars less in sales tax revenue for FY twenty twenty one than we are for this fiscal year. And so that's even worse than it sounds in that we typically see about a six percent. Increase in sales tax each year. And so what we're going to be doing is budgeting, you know, below one hundred, but typically it would be one hundred plus six percent for next year.
Well, we, you know, we were tracking a little ahead of budget. If you, if you go back and look through. J- January of twenty. Um, I, I think we'd budgeted roughly twenty eight million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. We had collected twenty seven million, eight ninety-three. So we were, we were tracking ahead. I, I, when everything evened up, but, but. I, I don't think we, I don't think anybody really. Totally grasped the fact that every single. Revenue generating item come to a screeching halt with this crisis. And, and then the, the fallout from that is, um. So certain, certain industries had backlogs of work, certain industries had things they could do for a period of time. Well, now that's just running out and their pipeline's not going to build back up. So it's not like a light switch and it starts over. This thing's going to have a lagging. Uh, negative curve. It's not going to be a V effect where we go down and come back up. It's going to be a U. And we're going to be on the bottom of that U for a significant period of time. And, and, and then there's going to be uh inflationary, deflationary issues beyond that, 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 you know, it's not all doom and gloom. But uh. To, to not be made whole in some capacity does put us. And all municipalities, uh, Paul's got a tough job because this one's, this one's all municipalities, large or small. Um, I did read today, I, I, I watched an interview today where I think uh, our. US Senate is looking at. Uh, a, a bill proposing uh that the money can be used for revenue replacement, but if it doesn't get to us from the county, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a conundrum.
Yeah, at this, uh, Mr. Butler, this is a, this is a great, you've raised a great point. Um. If the money goes to the state of North Carolina and ends up in our appropriations process, there's no guarantee that you'll get. Any direct appropriation for revenue replacement, which is really. You know, y'all have, y'all certainly have expenses related to COVID uh response. But you also have all the impact of the economic downturn and how that impacts your budgets. The cities are the economic engines. You guys create the environment through which the private sector thrives and. And then when it doesn't thrive because of these conditions, uh, you end up uh being hurt by that as a, as a government. So. If we don't figure out a way to get direct appropriation. And have it be flexible for revenue replacement. Uh, we have no guarantee. That you will receive anything through this process or through this and. Uh, the ultimate losers in this are your citizens, uh. Who, you know, will end up ultimately receiving reduced, reduced services or, or tax increases. I mean, there's just really no way around those two options. And you have solid management here and a great council, but I mean. It's just a very tough situation. Um, which is why we're working so hard to get you direct appropriation through.
It sounds like from a federal standpoint, um. You know, before they act on another stimulus that may come direct to, to municipalities. They're wanting to see how this first bucket of money works out. Maybe it'll all, I've heard them say, maybe it'll all be okay. Maybe it'll all be okay. But it's just simply not going to be okay if it doesn't get to us. That, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah. Uh, if, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you might, I'd just say one other thing. I know you guys have an agenda you want to work through. Uh. So the other thing that sort of complicates this. The state of North Carolina is experiencing massive revenue shortfalls as well. Uh, the estimates we've seen are somewhere between four and five billion dollar shortfall on a twenty-five billion dollar state budget. And the funding that has uh flowed to the state of North Carolina. Is for both them and us, is for both the state and local governments. And if they are deciding how that will be appropriated and they're facing very large shortfalls and there's flexibility. Provided for the use of those funds. Uh, and you're a state, you know, state senator or a state, uh, you know, the governor or a state representative. And you're facing a four to five billion dollar shortfall yourself, that, that's a very tough balancing act, you know? So. Again, this is, this is why we're asking Senator Tillis and Senator Burr. Uh, the rest of the North Carolina delegation, the, the House of Representatives folks to. Be looking for a direct appropriation to cities straight from US Treasury. Rather than it flowing through our state because of all of these dynamics, which are, this is a very complicated situation. So. Um, I, I appreciate your leadership and y'all working on this because it's, uh, is very hard.
Thank you, Paul. Other council questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll add to, just to finish up my answer to Mr. Butler's question. So in this, in addition to sales tax. We obviously, you know, by governor's order, not able to collect, the folks don't want to pay their water and sewer bill. They don't have to pay those bills. We understand that. We understand the importance of people having good water and sewer service. Uh, we were headed in that direction already, as you know, but based on governor's order, they don't have to pay the bills. We also can't, you know, our tool to collect those bills is to turn off the water. We're not allowed to do that by governor's order, which we understand that as well. So we have a loss in our water sewer revenues for some period of time. The other thing that complicates that, that gets lost in some of the, the other nuggets of this is we also collect, as do other cities across the state. We also collect our stormwater fees and our solid waste fees with our water bill. So folks are also not, not paying their water bill, not paying their sewer bill, not paying their stormwater fees. And not paying their sanitation fees. And so those are additional sources that I think, if you, you think to, you know, in my conversations with some congressional staffers in Washington. They just don't understand how we operate. They don't, that, that was, I shared that piece of information with. One of the staffers that was very interested in this topic and that was the first time he had heard that. So I think those are the messages that. We've got to figure out how to get those messages across. Um. In addition to that, the property taxes, obviously folks are going to be slow to pay property taxes as we talked about a. Uh, a strip shopping center owner, if he's not getting mu-, rent from his tenants, he's going to have trouble paying his property taxes. When those are due, so there's going to be a lag and, and, and Mr. Meyer, uh, referenced that. That it's going to take us a long time perhaps to collect property taxes. For many people, just because the dollars, they're not going to have the dollars uh to pay.
Well, also Harden, we got to remember the vehicle registration uh, uh, situation too, which is in, you know, impacted us. Um, as, as, as many of you all were involved in local government, uh, when our last. Substantial downturn in oh eight, oh nine. Uh, we go back and look at numbers and I did this with staff recently. Uh, we were really from, 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 from oh nine, it was about thirteen fourteen before we got back. To the revenues that we were earning before the downturn in oh eight, oh nine.
Right.
Now. I will say some of the larger cities in our state. Can rebound somewhat quicker. Uh, and, and we are one of the top twenty larger cities, but. Can you only imagine how it impacts the really small towns then? I mean, it's, it's, it's overwhelming. Uh, so. Obviously, we were a, a consumption-based society and sales tax. We, we were riding high and I think we all realized at some point in time, there was going to be a, a, a reckoning to some degree. But this is so dramatic that it, it's, it's something that. Will eventually lead to very, very uh difficult decisions and some decisions which we've never had to make before. Uh, what happens if some of these communities go away? Uh, literally. Uh, uh, in terms of a, a lot of these cities. That potentially are having real financial issues are also dealing with major, larger cities in providing their water and sewer services.
Right.
Uh, so this thing is, you had all kind of tentacles to reach out. And it's something we need to take very seriously and I'm not sure if we're not communicating it. Properly to Washington or if it's not being heard or if it's so many things coming at them, they just can't get it. Or maybe what Harden said earlier, Paul, is that maybe a, a lot of our uh congressional staffing or some of our leaders. Really don't understand how local government really functions.
Right. I th-, I think that's, that may be part of it. Um. And, you know, remember we have five hundred and fifty cities and they all operate a little differently so that, you know, that, that certainly contributes to some of this. Uh. But yeah, uh, when. If, if y'all are continuing to educate your delegation, I think that's really, really positive. Uh, I would encourage you to make those calls, not only your congressional delegation. Uh, but your state and, uh, you know, your state house and state senate members. Uh. You've, you've got a good delegation here from Alans, Alamance County. Uh, just keep talking to those folks. Uh, I just, um. I'm not sure everybody really understands what happened at the state level. Uh, we've heard a lot of state reps and state senators say. We had no idea that the cities wouldn't get anything under this guaranteed. Yeah. So, uh, just keep talking to them. That would be my advice.
Yeah, I appreciate those comments about kind of all the things we've continued to do and the fact that. As Paul mentioned, with cities being the engines of our, our economy, we recognize that we can't stop any of the gears, whether it's. Uh, sanitation, police, fire protection, all these things have to keep going day in and day out. Um, I do want to also mention that the Alamance County Commissioners had their discussion, uh, their initial discussion on CARES funding last night. Um, and of the three million dollars there, that Alamance County has been allocated, they're proposing about. Eight hundred thousand that be lumped into the bucket of loans or grants to. Municipalities, businesses and nonprofits. Um, and so I think. That's disconcerting that it's not even a per capita share. At eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, when you look at who lives in municipalities across our city and as Paul's talking about, this is. It's not just Burlington that we're really having this discussion about. It's about all the communities in our region who we work with, we partner with, we provide water, we back up their firefighters. Um, we're all depending on this together. Uh, and so to not see. Those funds coming to all of our municipalities in the, the scale that they need to. Is, is just another reason why I think we really need to be raising our voices at this time. Other questions, comments from council? There's a, a resolution in front of council, so I'll ask for a motion to adopt or that resolution.
So moved.
All right, I'm Councilmember Owen, second from Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to adopt the resolution? All right, all those in favor, please signal aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes and council members Butler, Ward and Owen. We appreciate Paul Meyer for being here and joining us in this discussion. Thank you for your hard work for the League of Municipalities. Burlington's always been a. A strong advocate for the work of the league and, uh, former Mayor Wall. Uh, I know it's been a lot of y'all, so. Uh, we appreciate your dedication to municipalities in North Carolina.
Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the council's attention to this. It'd be, is an important topic and. Uh, Mayor, I appreciate your service on our board of directors and, uh, look forward to seeing you all soon. Thank you all very much. Have a great night and again. Uh, uh, keep the faith. We'll get it done. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our regular business on tonight's agenda. We are moving into our public comment period. I'm going to go over a couple of the public comment details before we, we open up the phones. Uh, so public comments may be emailed to the city of Burlington at publiccomments@burlingtonnc.gov. We'll be accepting them until five PM on Tuesday of today. Uh, I'm reading this because it was listed in our agenda. Uh, we have received one of those comments, uh, written. That I know of. Comments can also be made during the meeting, which is right now. Uh, by joining the Zoom meeting. If you haven't already, the link is included in the agenda packet and on the city website. Uh, or you can also dial in using the number six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID eight three eight nine three three one one nine seven nine. And then at this time, if you wish to speak, you can press star nine on your phone or use the raise hand feature. Uh, on your Zoom. So at this time, it is. Public comment period and, uh, I'll ask our staff to notify us if we have any, any public comment. And I'm also going to reiterate that, um, our public information specialist, John Vernon is standing by if anyone is having any technical difficulties. And you can reach him at three three six five one three five four four zero. Uh, it looks like we have no folks on the line. I do know we have one pre-submitted uh comment, so I'm going to call on our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith at this time.
Good evening, council members. We have one public comment that was received by email. Every council member is on that, um, email group list and has received a copy of this and we will include the comment in the minutes. The comment is from George Adams. It was sent Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty at eight forty-one AM by email. The subject was hiring more bureaucrats during pandemic shutdown, question mark. The email reads, Mr. And Ms. Burlington City Council, my name is George Adams. My address is three seventeen Bidney Drive, Burlington, North Carolina, two seven two one five. This comment is concerning the higher, hiring of a youth division coordinator with free money from the state, question mark, state. Exclamation. Hiring another bureaucrat in a broken justice system will not solve the problem we have. Too much crime and too many criminals. Our criminal justice system has turned into a revolving door welfare system for lawyers and criminals. A lot of cases, criminals are living better than honest taxpaying citizens with three monkey emoji faces. We are letting them out faster than we can try them and we put them back in because they're afraid they will get sick in jail. Questions. Sadly, these crooks prey on old people, poor working people and small businessmen and women. Grumpy face emoji. God did not give us the ten commandments for us to ignore them because of the ACLU or the N double A C P. FYI, state and federal money is not free. Pig emoji face.
Thank you, Beverly. We appreciate you reading that into the record. Uh, as mentioned previously, folks could submit those via email ahead of time. To my knowledge, we don't have any additional public comment at this time. So we will conclude our public comment. And move on to council comments. I am going to bring up, since we just completed the public comment period, a recommendation that. In light of the fact that we are working through technology on these meetings and attempting to. Create the most transparent and publicly accessible uh government at this time in the current conditions. I thought it's reasonable to request to council the consideration of potentially moving the public comment period to the beginnings of the meeting. As an opportunity for folks to comment on, on. Things at the earlier point in this meeting. I know this is something we discussed a while back, uh, during a work session, just as a, a toss-up idea. So I wanted to get some feedback from folks and see if maybe we want, uh, staff to bring back some ideas at our work session two weeks from now.
Well, and what would be the primary reason for that, Mayor?
The primary reason would just be to, uh, help with council receiving comments on things that might be relevant to the agenda, but not officially have a public comment period. Um, so if, if somebody wanted to comment on something such as this public comment. At this point in the meeting, we would have already made a decision if we hadn't tabled that item. So if someone was trying to bring a public comment, it's something that wouldn't normally have the opportunity for them to. Raise a hand in the, the council chamber and potentially be called on without a formal public comment. By putting it at the beginning of the meeting, we could at least receive those comments and consider them into our decisions.
Pertaining to the agenda items, that's what you're speaking about. Yeah. David, what's the, what is the, what is the guidelines on that?
It, it's, it's up to the city council, whether it's, some cities do it.
But we have, what we, what do we have in place now? What is it? What are our guidelines currently? Uh, don't we have something?
I'm not sure you have anything written. I, I'll check, but I, I think you, um. One of the advantages of having it at the end of the meeting is that you have gone through the agenda and. Uh, sometimes folks show up. sometimes folks show up live. When you're having your meetings live, they show up and they want to speak and they just don't know exactly. You've actually had them where they, they missed the whole subject matter of a public hearing and get up and speak at the end, not having been aware that, you know, the, the matter was before them, before you already. I, I don't, I don't know that it really is anything dictated as to when in the course of a meeting, you need to have a, it's just you have to have one public comment meeting opportunity a month.
Other council questions? I know some of our other councils around the state do include this at the beginning of their meeting. So it's just part of that discussion.
Why don't we just take this under consideration and as we work through the number of issues we're facing now, maybe think about this at a later date. I believe our, our plates can be rather, rather full as we attempt to approve a budget and continue to provide the essential services to our residents with, with some challenges before us.
Yeah. Other thoughts on that?
I, I think, I think we consider it a later time. I think would be appropriate, Mayor.
Okay, alright.
I, I agree with that, but I also have this sense that it's important for citizens who want to make comments to attend a meeting. And what we find out is when we recognize people that they leave right after that. And I'm certainly not trying to punish them, but I, I think that it's valuable that people who want to have a comment would actually participate in the meeting all the way through. Just my buy.
I, I agree with Kathy on, on that one. I've, I've had so many people comment that came for a public comment about something completely different that got to experience a meeting and didn't really realize. I've had people congratulate us on how well meetings were ran. Even because they had never sit through one. It's not so much of a penalty.
Yeah. Especially now that we can all do it at home in our pajamas.
They just don't, they don't understand the fun we have and, and really need to stay. And once they do that, they would really appreciate it and come more.
And they're all going to run against us fairly soon.
Hey Jim, is that the penalty of leadership?
That's just a penalty, period.
Yeah.
That's the penalty of viewership.
Yeah. Alright, other, other council comments at this time? And I'd like to call on Manager Harden Watkins for a couple of special recognitions this evening.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmembers, I just wanted to take an opportunity. This is unusual. We don't normally do this, but we're in a social distancing situation. So we've had two employees that retired and we're unable to have their traditional party that we like to have for our long, long serving employees. So I thought as part of our effort, we're, we're signing cards for them and that sort of thing, but it, it part of the effort of trying to do a little extra for some folks that are leaving, I thought I would just share a little bit about them at the council meeting. We're not going to do this obviously post-social distancing, but I thought it'd be nice just to recognize a couple of folks that have retired during our social distancing period, just to give them a little more publicity and kudos for their wonderful careers with us. First is Mick Brooks. Mick, Mick, it's retired and served as our assistant street superintendent in the Public Works Street Division. Mick, Mick began with the city in nineteen ninety and retired on April first of two thousand twenty. So right at thirty years of service to Public Works. And as you all know, especially with our natural disasters, a lot of late nights, a lot of early mornings, a lot of working in unpleasant conditions. And he was sort of the man out in the field keeping an eye on things out in the field for us. And so we appreciate Mick. We did not have a chance to properly recognize him in a group setting and, and just thought we'd try to do this. He, like I said, almost thirty years with the city. Started off as a general maintenance worker, one in our water resources department, and then made a wonderful career here at the city of Burlington. And we certainly appreciate his service and want to try to recognize him publicly for that. Another employee will be retiring June first. That is Jeff Parsons. Many of you know Jeff. He currently serves as our grounds and cemetery superintendent. He'll be retiring. He started here in May of nineteen eighty two. I would have been a sophomore in high school then. Jeff, like I said, serves our grounds and cemetery superintendent. So he's in charge of quite a bit of things happening in our public works, grounds and cemetery division. Jeff started out with us, like I said, nineteen eighty two, and he was a truck driver, started off as a truck driver in the streets division. And you all know Jeff, he's a fairly high profile in terms of working with our tree appearance commission in charge of, you know, our, our three cemeteries and making sure those things are in, each of our cemeteries are in good shape. He obviously has gotten to spend a lot of time in some of our older parts of town, working with street trees of late. Probably been a little more high profile than he wanted to be as some of our big trees have come down. But we appreciate Jeff. Jeff lives in the community as well. He's going to stay connected with us. We think he's going to help us out with some, some things on a contractual basis as we need him. So we'll definitely stay in touch. But we're all going to miss Jeff. He has a great spirit and I know each of you have had a chance to spend some time with him. But we're sorry we can't have a proper going away party for Jeff at this time, but we, we are committed, the public works department is committed to do something for them in the summer, early fall, whenever we have some eased restrictions to do that. But want to take just a couple of minutes just to recognize both of those individuals and thank them for their wonderful service. You know, a combined sixty eight years of service has left us in the last two months in public works. And that's a, a huge void for us to fill. It's going to be difficult for us to replace each of them.
Thank you. Did you also want to mention Public Works Week?
And, and it is Public Works Week, City Council. And again, we're sad with our social distancing requirements as well. We're not going to be able to have our traditional picnic. And again, we just want to thank all our public works folks. We're also joined by folks from engineering, transportation and our water resources division in terms of celebrating that together. We did supply the shirts to everyone this year. This year, they're a lovely neon yellow green. So I think, hope each council member got one as well. We may have something, again, when we clear our social distancing rules and try to reconvene some sort of picnic. There we go. There's one of our beautiful shirts.
Mine's a tense, what it is.
We do, just so you all know, to express our appreciation to our staff, we're not able to have a buffet lunch. Obviously that would not be leading by example, but we have provided each member of those four departments that I mentioned with a voucher where they can go to Johnny's Western Steakhouse anytime over the next few weeks and they will be served lunch by Johnny. He is doing a robust takeout business, so we'll also get a plug in for him, but everybody will have a voucher and they can go help themselves to a lunch and it's just a small token of our appreciation for National Public Works Week.
Wonderful. And I think it's a very fitting tribute, especially once we're talking about revenue replacement. Those are folks who are out there working as water pipes or any type of infrastructure goes out there, making sure that our, our community is still structurally strong through this crisis. So we appreciate their diligence. Alright, any other council comments?
Mayor, if I could, I meant this, this in the last meeting, but certainly I, I, I think I can speak for all of us to, to David. Our thoughts and prayers are with you, David, and your entire family on the loss of your mother. Having a chance to know her, she, she was a special lady. It had to be to be your mother, but that's another story. But our thoughts and prayers are with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Alright, any other comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protem Hikes. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Motion is passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Thank you everyone for joining us this evening. We are officially adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Great. See you.
Good night.